Didn't know if it was becoming.
Kind of worked their way to City Council.
No.
Yeah.
Other, oh yeah. But.
It's good.
I just heard.
Haven't heard anything from Bob.
We're going to call tonight's meeting, February 18th, to order City Council. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Sal Thado.
Present.
Finem. Arby.
Present.
Brad.
Present.
Six Presidents, one action, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, Matt Brick, our city attorney's here with us tonight, and thank all of you in the audience. This is the time when we ask for comments from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. I will mention, for any of you that are here to talk about the Second Street being switched back to a two-way, that is actually an item on the agenda, so we wouldn't hear from comments about that at this time. Is there any citizens that would like to speak about anything else? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
That's what you, he wasn't listening.
My name is Claire Martin. My home address, or my business.
Yes, please.
1574 Washington Street. And all this changing on Second Street, I want to make my plea for parking in front of my business, which is 209 West Second Street.
Mrs. Martin.
Yeah.
Are you wanting to talk about the two-way switch?
No.
Something separate.
I want to talk about the parking.
Okay.
Parking. We have three-hour parking now, and all this is going to be changed, and I want to get in on the change. When I was on Walnut Street, I have a business where a lot of my customers are elderly or handicapped, and they just come in and drop off and stop and pick up. So 15-minute parking is great for me, and where I was before, they could come in and do that and just drop their, and even leave their kids in the car and come in and drop off their stuff. But right now, we have three-hour parking. A lot of that parking in front of my business is either tenants that live there or people who are employees and park in front of the store, and all day, I can see a car there, and then it'll just move from this spot to this spot. And my business has been hurting since I've moved downtown because of this parking situation. So if there's going to be changing, I would like to know if there's any way that I could get 15 minutes to a half-hour parking in front of my store, and that's what I would like to ask.
Thank you very much.
So that I, excuse me, so my customers can have their in-and-out.
Thank you for sharing. Is there anyone else? We'll move on to Item 5 in the agenda, the Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes Items 6A through E, Items 8A through I, Items 12A and B, and tonight's expenditures totaling $1,300,031.28?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Your Honor. I had a quick question on that.
Alan.
I had a quick question on 8F regarding the Derby. Will there be any conflict between running the Derby and the parades?
The Derby and what?
The parades, the Fourth of July parades. Because the Derby's going to be crossing over Iowa Avenue, and that's where the parade is coming down, and I didn't know the timing of the two.
I guess, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll.
We got a representative here, he can.
You can share.
Yeah, come on up.
Yes, please.
You get airtime.
No, to your question, we're work, we work closely with the chamber, so we'll be done an hour before the parade is scheduled to start.
Okay.
So we, we'll have some cleanup to do, but we'll have, we'll be done in plenty of time before the parade to not interfere with that.
You won't be mowing down anybody with your.
Okay.
Thank you for helping us.
That's all, Your Honor.
All in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That will move us to Item 11 on the agenda. Item A, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution accepting easements for the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail project. Approval of the easement agreement, which covers the route of the trail between 33rd and 41st Street, will complete the process of acquiring all the necessary property and easements needed to construct this project. Approval of the easement will allow for construction to proceed this spring. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to take this opportunity neglected to do so the last time we talked about this, to thank the HON Investment Company and the F and J HON Incorporated for donating their land for the easements along that trail, so I'd like to thank them for doing that.
And what have we done to thank them? It's H A, H N, right?
Staff, have we done anything?
H H N I.
Not H O N.
Mayor, Council, we, staff has personally expressed our gratitude for it, but as truly generous people, as these landowners are, they really do not want any recognition and/or special anything.
Well, they just received it.
What's that?
They just received the recognition.
I understand that, so maybe we can limit it there.
So, a nice letter from the mayor, but nothing public, is that?
Very much so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. This is a roll call vote. How do you vote, Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes, aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Did I say you twice, Mike?
No, no, you just called him. He's startled.
Oh, okay, I was going to say.
I get two votes.
Could have convinced me. Moving on to B, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution accepting easements for the Mulberry Avenue from Palms Drive to Hauser Street Reconstruction Project. This project design work is essentially complete, and the city needs temporary construction easement from most of the adjoining property owners. The total number of easements required is 26, and the total cost for the easements is $1,500. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? How do you vote, Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to C, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution awarding the bid and approving the contract and bond for the Muscatine Slough Rip-Rap Project. Seven bids were submitted for this project with the lowest responsible bid from bronze excavation in the amount of $39,627. There are several items in that project that will be done by Public Works and Parks and Recreation staff. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Scott, is there any discussion?
I have one question. There was quite a dollar gap between the low bid and the next higher bid, and that just raised a question in anybody's mind of why that gap is there? Particularly, you know, are we getting everything we expect to get out of the low bid?
Mayor, Council, the question is, are we getting everything out of the low bid that we expect to get?
Well, I just noticed this one's 39, and the next one's like 45 or something like that.
Yes.
It just caught my eye that there's quite a gap there.
Yes, it is, it is the same, and that is, that is the low bid, and I actually think that's a low number, but that, nothing's different about that little bit.
Okay, so they haven't eliminated anything?
No, nothing.
There was quite a range in those bids, all the way from this and up to 101,000 or something like that.
Yes, there were.
Somebody's busy.
I will offer no opinions as to why that is. Any other questions?
So you're confident?
I am confident that that work will get done just exactly the way it's supposed to get done.
Thank you.
Jim, do you get the white tickets from Wendling, so you can ascertain how many tons have been applied?
The material, I gotta bend this thing up, it's killing my back, and then again, maybe not. The material, in an effort to save money, the material is going to be used to riprap that, is stuff that the city has taken receipt on and broken up into big yet still riprap-sized concrete, and the city is going to haul and stockpile the material down there, so.
Great, thank you.
We have to, we have to document the quantity, the old-fashioned way of measuring it, figuring out volumes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Santos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 11D on the agenda, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the bids, the bid opening for the Muscatine Art Center HVAC replacement and miscellaneous window renovations project. HVAC system upgrades will begin in the Stanley Gallery, Link, Musser House, and Carriage House, and miscellaneous window renovations will begin as well. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on March 3rd at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Tom, any discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to just mention for the public's information before the public hearing is held that we've had an issue with the HVA system, the heating and ventilation and air conditioning system at the art center for a number of years, and it's to the point now to where it doesn't adequately protect the art that's there, and also it prevents some traveling exhibits from coming to Muscatine because they aren't willing to put their art in our art center because of the issues with the, particularly with the humidity control in the summertime, so that's really what's driving this project, is that we need to upgrade that heating system and air conditioning system to bring it up to standards that are adequate to protect the art that we own and art that's loaned to us. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? How do you vote, then, Alan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. 11E of the agenda, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Clark House Domestic Water Heater Replacement Project. The bid for this project was awarded to J.L. Brady in the amount of $49,478 at the February 4th, 2016 City Council meeting. It is now necessary to approve the contract and bond for this project. Project costs will be paid through the Public Housing Capital Fund program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Scott, any discussion? How do you vote, Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 11F, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid, of unpaid abatement costs and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $16,052.44. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil? Is there a second?
Second.
Tom, is there any discussion?
One question, Your Honor, is, have we in the past assessed rental inspection fees to abatement costs? I may not have noticed in the past, but it caught my eye this time. I didn't want Dave to get by tonight, you know.
I'm going to slide by tonight. Every month, we submit, and this wasn't always the case until I got here, but we were about a year and a half behind on these assessment fees. There's also administration fees.
Right.
Associated with this. Now, every month, you should see in your packet all of the unpaid assessment fees, and we're talking generally a couple months old, before it reaches your desk here for approval. This is always done so that we can record that with the, with the deeds of those properties at the county office. I forget which office, but staff knows. The point is that this keeps us up to date, and the record's up to date, as to unpaid fees on property, and believe me, it's a great leverage point to get paid when they get on, when they get on your tax rolls.
I was surprised to see rental inspection fees on it, though, but, so we've done this in the past?
Well, it's rental inspections, and it's also nuisance abaintments, too.
Right, right.
But we've always, we've, this is a way and customary that the city's always conducted itself. It did have a lag there about a year and a half where it didn't, it was that far behind, but.
Now, if they don't pay their rental inspection fee, do we still allow them to rent the property?
Well, there's a certain point as to when that stops, you know. We, we have the enforcement power to revoke the license.
So you have that club in the.
Yeah, that's right. We're the kitty with a red pen, we can basically strike.
This constitutes a lien on the property.
Right.
Yes, it is, yeah.
But Dave, the administrative fee was adopted or changed, oh, during your tenure, we added the administrative.
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, last year, we went through a whole new rental program, rental housing program with new fees and larger, larger penalties, and we, we, we haven't enforced the newer, larger penalties yet, but we will be this year. Is there any other questions?
I see we've got a couple of, multiple offenders on here, and Mr. Brian Costas has 10 violations, and Mr. Dane Paulson has four. They seem to be the trendsetters. We have any, I wonder, do you have any special words for these folks, or? I've got a couple.
We just put a lien on a property, Mike, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, we put liens on the property, the only next things to do is to take and revoke their licenses or their certificates, so they can't rent the property, and they become posted. The other end of it, then, we have, we almost always have a list of usual suspects, so it's this one this month, it's another one the next month, and, but Counselor Spread is correct, our first line of defense is to get unpaid stuff assessed and put on the, as a lien to the property. Then there's two or three other steps, but that's the first step.
Thank you.
And it's done every month now.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dave.
Is there any other discussion? How do you vote, Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 11G, presented for City Council's consideration as a resolution accepting completed work for the Cedar Street Traffic Signal Project. Funds were secured for this project from the Traffic Safety Fund in an amount of $138,000. Muscatine Power and Water designed and constructed the signals and completed their work on August 14th of 2015. The final accounting of the project from Muscatine Power and Water is $127,723. Once the city receives funding from the state of Iowa from the Traffic Safety Fund, the city will reimburse Muscatine Power and Water for their project costs. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott, thank you, second?
Second.
Alan, is there any discussion?
Is this the one traffic light at the high school?
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter what it costs because it's going to get reimbursed? I can't imagine how that costs $130.
Well, there's, there's two large stanchions out there with masts. They are expensive. It's, they're, they're big and they're expensive, yeah. And, and we knew this when we started, yeah.
Yeah. That's outrageous.
I'm not saying nothing, I thought there was a question coming.
Well.
I'm just prepping myself.
It just seems just like a hell of a lot of money for a stoplight.
Traffic signal installation like that, if it had another leg to it, you would usually say it's $150,000. I mean, that's how much they cost.
Where's the cost, the switchgear?
Uh, and in the foundation, foundation underneath those is a drilled pier that I think goes 20 feet deep to hold.
Under the switchgear box?
No, underneath those poles to hold the can lever signal system out.
And you might recall that one of those foundations failed, it had to be redone.
Yeah, failed the test, yeah.
Jim, this is a question you may not know the answer to, but in the day of, day and age of miniaturization of electronic devices, you still see these huge boxes that the relays and switches are in for stoplights. Is that the case at that intersection also?
You're right, I don't know. You'd have to ask MP&amp;W that question. I mean, they're the ones that designed it and were the general contractors to build it. The only thing they sublet out or subcontracted out was just doing the foundations, so.
We got to get in that business.
I don't think you want in that business. Honestly, I really don't think you want in the business.
The footings have to be able to handle the load, plus the wind load, yeah.
Yeah, plus the torque or whatever you want to call about having a load out here and the foundation over here, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions on that?
Any other discussion? How do you vote, Mike?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 11H, presented for City Council's consideration as a request to approve the conversion of Second Street from a one-way to a two-way reconfiguration. The city has evaluated converting Second Street between Pine Street and Mulberry, and Mulberry Avenue, from a one-way to a two-way configuration for the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. Furthermore, following the completion of the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project, Second Street will remain a two-way street. Following multiple public meetings, the overall response has been to keep Second Street as a two-way street. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I wanted, I, I'm, I'm in, in the mood to table this, but if there's anyone in the public here that would like to speak to this, before I do that, I would like to have offered them the chance.
Do we have someone in the audience that would like to speak?
Yes.
Please come to, over to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Brent Hill, and I run Hill's Paint Store, and I appreciate the council listening to me.
Absolutely.
I, I understand the basis of why we want to turn Second Street into a two-way. There's a lot of discussion of doing that, and it's worked very well for a lot of communities. I guess my concern as a small business owner and as a user of downtown is that the size of the street leads us to have an awful lot of, of, there's just not a lot of space on the street. So as a result, it becomes difficult for two-way traffic for parking, which will negatively affect customers who are trying to get to the stores, customers that are trying to find a parking spot. Essentially, when you're, when you are heading down the street and it's a two-way, we will lose half our parking places from that side. A good example, I was driving down the other day after I started to think about this issue, and I drove five blocks, there was three open parking places, but they were all on the wrong side of the street, and I wouldn't have been able to get to them. So I have, I have worries that instead of making it easier for people to use the downtown, we're actually going to, to make it more difficult. Other issues would simply be, if you're waiting for, for, to get a parking place, it's going to be much harder to, for the car behind you to get around, so we get much more difficult in that respect for people to use the street. I've also have concerns about the freight issues that many of the stores are going to, going to have. I know that Jim's working, working with us to do that, and I believe that they are working in good faith, but I believe there's also a lot of issues that haven't completely been covered. Getting the big trucks in and out, our alleys are quite small, makes it difficult to, to get the trucks through, so there's a lot of issues there, and I would just highly encourage the council to, to give this some more thought and maybe give us some more time at least to work through the issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic?
I, I would move to table this and tell such time that we can have another public hearing, or a public meeting, not a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on moving it?
There is no discussion on it.
Done.
All right.
Just take a vote.
Roll call vote? Would you do a roll call vote? Mike?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tom? Next is 11I, presented for City Council's consideration as a request from the Police Department to declare light bars as surplus property. The department would like, the department would like to declare three of its old retired squad light bars as surplus property. If approved, the department's intention is to sell two of the light bars to another government agency. The remaining light bar will only be sold or given to another law enforcement agency. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. Scott? Is there any discussion?
Just want to thank the chief for including the last part of that. Selling these to other law enforcement agencies rather than opening it up to the public to buy them. Don't believe they need to be in the hands of them.
I concur with that statement.
Thank you, Chief. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Next, I need a motion for us to enter into closed session. Yes. Oh, yeah, we do need comments. Any counsel? Mike?
Yes, a couple. Jim, I know that you think we're going to lose two parking spots per block. Did I recall that correctly? With the new loading zone?
The idea is currently to try to put two loading zones per block. But I mean, it would, it would, one on each side and it would be the sort of thing that would be signed like current loading zones are where there's a 15-minute limit. So I mean, you could use it as a parking stall like this lady was saying, you know, for 15-minute dash in and out, but it also is signed for a loading zone. So I think it can be used, but yes, to answer your question straight away, the thought is to try to do that.
How many are there already?
Most of those...
Are there two per block?
No, most of those blocks have one in it.
Each block has one?
Yeah. And they aren't big enough to accommodate, Mr. Hill has, and the furniture people have semi. And you need something approximating 75, 80 feet to get that in there. So we're not going to try and put those everywhere, but we're going to try to strategically get a couple of them down there.
That's three stalls.
Yeah.
I, I have, I kind of have a problem with it. That's part of the reason why we need some more time to discuss this.
I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to get back up here though because one of the things that I think if you would grant staff a little bit of time to, I mean, we're working on that parking layout and that loading zone layout and, you know, what the signing is going to be and also with regards to a recommendation as to the amount of time that the parking should be for. So if you can grant us the time to complete that plan, at least as a first draft, then maybe we can do this public meeting based on that.
That's, that's what I had in mind.
Yeah.
That's why it wasn't specific to a specific time or date or anything else.
Our thinking was, is that we didn't really want to jump and prepare that plan if the vote was going to be that we don't want to convert it to a two-way. But I think that's probably the way we're headed. Or, yeah, the way we're headed is, I think, probably the best way. Everybody gets better information that way.
We need more information to make the decision, yes.
Yeah.
In each block, in the middle of the block, there's kind of a little island where you...
Little bumpout.
You're right. Could you prepare just a rough guesstimate of what it would cost to rip that out to gain two parking spots per block?
Sure.
Just a, you know...
If that's the council's wish, we can, we can do more in a rough guesstimate. We'll try to get it fairly close. While you're on that subject, at the far end, close to Pine Street where the public parking lot is, that decorative little feature that's there juts out into where parking would be too. You want an estimate to remove that? Two?
I think what you're talking about, but...
I would, I would say go with a ballpark. Don't, don't, don't have staff to put in a lot of time.
Understood, understood. But we can at least, because all the, the only costs that I presented to you guys was for restriping and the sign costs. So we can put that together with the two.
While you're up there, Jim, one of the things in the material was that the two-way would make it easier to enter the new proposed parking garage.
Garage, traffic. Well, I wouldn't say easier to enter if I phrased it to say easier to enter. I mean, I think it makes, especially if you're not familiar with town, it's easier to get access to it. You don't have to figure out how to go, which way around the block.
Drive around the block to get into it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And are you still talking with the owners downtown about the store owners downtown, about their opinions on how this is going to work for them or how it's going to impact them? Have you been...
Yes, but if any of you have any names of the people that have contacted you that maybe don't feel like their voice has been heard, get me that name. I'll be more than happy to contact them, chat with them.
This isn't really to do with that, but it's allied, I guess you'd say. I've gotten some calls from downtown. Folks wondering if we can reduce the three-hour free limit to something much shorter to try and discourage.
Yeah, I think that's what will come in the package, is recommendation from staff as to what we think would be appropriate there.
We have those ladies walking there every day.
And to be honest, the current conversation is 30 minutes is too short. And, you know, two hours for sure is too long, 90 minutes maybe is too long. So I think it's kind of, we're all arguing about what's appropriate, but at least that gives you an idea.
Or maybe a mix you're like Mrs. Martin brought up, maybe a few 15 minutes, a few...
But if a merchant has to go out eight times a day to move their car, they might not.
Exactly.
They might not do it.
They might rethink that.
And we got more chances to go out to it.
Exactly.
Just for everybody's benefit, the plan that's in place today, the parking plan, is probably over 10 years old, but it was the work product of the Downtown Merchants Association. So probably it's time to talk about it again, but, you know, folks had input then and it's appropriate that we do it again.
And it's my understanding they don't exist any longer.
Right, right, things change.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have anything else, Mike?
Yes. Where the sewer work has been done the last few years, it's been, we had to, and I understand why Randy explained it. They had to take out all the trees between the sidewalk and the curb. And those will be replaced with appropriate trees. And I would like to be supplied with, to the council be supplied with, a plan. Nothing to scale, nothing elaborate, just here's a 300-block of West Fifth we're going to put a tree here, 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 and here. And, you know, mix them up and with a date that we hope it will be started and finished.
Appreciate that, Mike.
They're always going to do it, but I think if we have a plan submitted that we can approve, it'll really happen.
Absolutely. Jim?
Again, I'm not saying anything. I'm just prepping in case a question is there, but...
Can we have a plan?
A little bit of information, yeah. We, we now have a plan that shows where all the trees have been removed. And so in essence, that becomes the plan of where all the trees go in. And it is nothing fancy, but we can provide that to you guys, make a copy of it and distribute it.
And what type of, who's making the determination of the appropriate tree? Because I've, over the years, I've seen some, what the current person thought was appropriate was really not what people I talked to was appropriate.
My understanding is that there's a list of trees that are appropriate street trees and so parks will pick from that list and scatter them out. They don't want a lot of any one specific species in one specific area. They want to make it as diverse as possible.
Andrew, do you know more about that?
Get up here.
Thank you, Jim.
The Parks Department does have a list of approved street trees. I believe there's about, I'd say about 24 different varieties that have been approved for planning in the public right away.
The second and last, or third and last item I have is, at the public meetings about Mississippi Drive, there are, you know, the proposed plantings and all this stuff. And so I remember somebody raised the point, well, are we going to take care of these or just like Davenport and forget them?
I heard that comment as well.
Okay, downtown now we have, I don't know how many of these spots where there's a tree planted that never gets watered, never gets fertilized, and the rest of it's burned. And it looks like it was planted and forgotten about 10 years ago. Is there something we can do to make those more presentable?
Absolutely, and that's part of the plan is to take what we learned on Mississippi Drive and convert that over to Second Street and make those same or similar improvements on there. Whether that be tree grates or trees or whatever, whatever application so that it matches what we adopt on Mississippi Drive.
So two or three years from now.
Well, we should have a plan relatively well.
Maybe we can start maintenance now, though.
Right, well, but we don't want to necessarily put a new type of treatment in there. We had talked about putting grates in there, the metal grates you see in a lot of communities. But we were thinking of taking whatever application we put on Mississippi Drive and carrying that same application so that it matched.
But surely they could be watered now if that's what you're talking about, Mike?
And fertilizing, you know, some of them, they don't know if they'll get the same light.
The corridor consultants had recommendations on varieties of trees too that didn't have as wide a canopy.
That's what we use for our street trees, exactly, absolutely.
I'd like to remind, well, maybe not remind people, Phil might remember this, but going back, you know, 20, 30 years, the city has attempted a lot of streetscaping issues on Second Street and on Mississippi Drive and basically all fell flat on their face after a couple of years. So I think we need to be pretty aware of whatever streetscaping plans come forth that they are maintainable.
Well, maintenance has been a key throughout the project, absolutely.
Mike, anything further?
Oh, thank you. That is more than enough.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Santos?
I got a question for Dave Govan. If you could explain what's, what's happening with the state taking over the city's responsibility for the health and restaurant inspections?
Must be serious.
We get to see you twice. Yeah.
Not as popular, him, him though. The state explained to us last summer that they had an interest in, they gave me a map and said that basically their game plan over the course of four or five years was to take all of the state's inspections, health inspections, over. We had asked them, well, what their plan was and such. And they had, already had taken, just had taken Clinton County and a few other counties at the time. I believe I forwarded to the council through memos or emails a full explanation of specifics such as which counties and the like and dates and such. We do not agree that it's serving the city of Muscatine as well as it was when we were doing it. Their concept is that we're basically in the second wave of a five-wave program of which counties they were not going to renew their 2080 agreement with and just let them expire. Ours expired on September 30th last year, 2015. We had tried to appeal to the Commissioner or Director of the Department of Inspection of Appeals. There is no appeal process, none at all. So, I mean, the next step is to go to the county legislature, county, the county commissioner or whatever, maybe a board of commissioners, but there is no appeal process.
So it's nothing that we were doing wrong in our inspections?
No, well, I gave you some of the areas that they had pointed out, but most of them were all easily defended. One area that we had was that previously, five, seven years ago, and where we started getting a significant backlog of health inspections not being performed or being performed poorly. Put us in a, put us in a real, backed ourselves up against the wall where the state asked us to come in and basically, that's when we hired, we had a very qualified health inspector, inspector involved and trained and, and he's still with the department right now. But there was only so much he could do, but we were making headway. We were catching up on all of the health inspections that were, in a sense, backlogged. But that, in conjunction with their, their acquisition program, kind of didn't mix. We weren't enough along, but we were still doing, you know, in a sense, 30, 20 to 30 a month. When I checked the records for what's been done in Muscatine since October 1st, which is when they took over, the number is six. The state has done six inspections compared to what we've done locally.
Total?
Per month. We do per month. They've done six in five months.
Wow, okay.
Does that give you some sense of the change in scope?
Actually, they've done 42.
Not according to the records online. Maybe they've got a different set of records. They haven't updated them, but that's the records online, six.
Weren't we on probation for a while because we weren't getting our inspections done timely?
No, we were never on probation. We were always on the schedule of our 2080 agreement, 2080 agreement.
And we fulfilled all of the requirements of that 2080?
Well, they, they came up with some reasons they thought were, we were deficient, but when we provided them all of the documentation that they were asking for, it showed that we were not deficient in anything.
Anything else, Santos?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Did I understand that so far in a way, when the state has done an inspection and found some problems, they really haven't followed through to see if they have been corrected?
If that's what the state's doing, I'm not aware. But what we did is we had a constant follow-up program and none of the follow-ups counted as inspections.
Do we, does the city have any way of asking the state, why have you only done six inspections in the last five months?
Well, she says there's 42. I say there's six. There's the right numbers in there somewhere and I got to find that out. I find it hard to believe that one person can serve four different counties as effectively as one officer here in the city. So I've got to figure out what the right number is and get that to you. If she says it's 42 and it is 42, that's, I'll admit to that. But still, it's only 42 over five months.
Does the state have to report to the, like the city that these are inspections that have been done?
No, they've got no, no responsibility to the city to, to keep us informed.
Doesn't seem right, I guess.
It wasn't all that long ago that we spent the time and money to train a staff person to do this.
We had constant training every year to keep their, keep their training up.
At whose expense?
At our expense, yes. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thanks. Do you have anything else, Santos?
No.
Alan?
Nothing more tonight, Your Honor.
Tom, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Greg, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I had just a couple of things, someone, a couple of phone calls that I had received about wondering why we can't do snow removal up at the top end of the boat ramp. It stops before getting to that end.
At the top end of the new boat launch?
Yes. And the second part of that from the same person was the porta potty is down for that end, is down by the building. They would prefer that it was down the other way because people that are ice fishing and going in and out of the boat ramp or people that are walking that trail and people are walking it. We've had a lovely winter, so it's been walkable. Nobody's over by the building. Everybody's over at the other end and they would wish that it was a little bit more convenient and I agreed to pass that on.
We keep it by the building or behind the building to hide it. Frankly, we don't like to have a porta potty sitting out in the middle of the beautiful park along the riverfront and it's, you know, it's not that far away. Part two on the porta potty was, was the first part?
The first part was snow removal.
No, there was, was there two items in the location? Was it the location of the porta potty? Was there something else on there?
No, it was just the location. They would like to have it be closer where they're walking.
Last time I talked to Rich about the issue, it's actually getting extremely minimal use. I don't know that justifies the monthly expense to even put it there since we've tried it out. But it's getting very minimal use.
They were sharing, there's quite a few walkers that are walking that trail and using it.
Doesn't it freeze up?
I think there's chemicals that we probably don't want to know about.
But that's why it's there rather than at the, at the boat launch.
Greg, maybe we could get a brick porta potty?
Well, long-term, you know, as part of the master plan, you know, we used to have restrooms in the...
have restrooms in the, there are, there still are two restrooms.
We had them down near the.
At the funding station, or on the second floor, they're not ADA accessible. We've talked about it'd be relatively easy to add on two restrooms at that location.
Is that building winterized where they could be year-round?
There's potential, certainly, certainly.
There used to be one set down, like, in front of the pier, the old pier, there was a, those are really jewels. I never frequented them, they were there.
Well, as we are getting more blue zone in our community, and we are getting, have people are getting out and doing more walking, it's just a benefit for them to have access. That was the last thing on the agenda. We're moving to a request to enter a closed session per Iowa Code Chapters 21.5I and 21.9. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom? Mike? How do you vote?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't know, Dave.